Stand for the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. Good morning. Wish everybody a blessed and happy Easter. Today is our 13th board meeting of the year. It's Thursday, March 28th at approximately 10:06 a.m. in the morning. And we will first begin with public comments. You'll have three minutes in your name and address for the record.
My name is Sydney Gillum. My address used to be 10200 Youngstown Salem Road, Salem, Ohio, Green Township. I was in distress last week when I came here, and shame on you to not say to me, what is the problem that you're in so much distress? Well, this man came to my house on January 25th at 11 o'clock in the morning. He was in a black pickup truck. He was not a police officer. He was not in a police car. And he gave me a copy of this order that does not have a press seal on it. The top half of it comes from Judge Hauser's court. The bottom half comes from Judge Chabonie's court in Sebring. Okay? It says my landlord needed to fix his septic system. They never told us anything. I was not being a victim. I paid my rent for 17 years every month. He didn't fix anything. He didn't repair anything. But I stood in this room two years ago, Carol, and brought the issue of the Homestead Act that he claimed and did not live in the house for 20 years. Now, we're not talking hundreds of dollars or thousands of dollars missing, but millions of dollars. Because I did some checking. There are people who are claiming the Homestead Act but do not live in the property. And he did not live with me or my family. Okay? Now, two nights later, people were around the back of my house, it's one-floor house, and pounding on the house, get out, get out, get out. Call the police, you aren't worth our time. Two days later, two men dressed in black were standing on my front porch. And I was the only one home alone. My foot was up against the door. They're beating on the door. And one said, oh, let's try to get in, see what we could find. I waited till they went off the porch, and I looked out the little bedroom window. They were just in black in a black pickup truck with no lettering and no front license plates. Now, you think about if you lived through that terrorizing situation and not be afraid. The man said we had five days to get out, not an eviction notice. An eviction notice is 30 days. Five days. He said, I'm coming back to arrest everybody in your house, and you're going to lose everything. Who was I supposed to turn to, Anthony? Because I called you. And I called Michael Bruley. And I called the Sheriff's Department and the Prosecutor's Office and both courts. Both courts never heard of me. My name is not listed on any paperwork, none. But yet, I was allowed to be terrorized. I had to leave half my house behind because I had no money to rent a truck.
And then where are you living now?
In Pennsylvania. It makes me shameful of how I was treated. Because the thing is, I won, my family's won numerous awards for volunteerism for this county, for Northeast Ohio, the state of Ohio, and nationally. I paid my rent every month. My husband has been gone 20 years, and I still paid my rent, and I'm not on welfare. Everybody in my house worked. But I had to leave half my house behind. And none of you did anything to protect me or my family. Oh, I went to Goshen Township Police. And Detective West said it wasn't worth his time to fill out a police report. So how do you feel safe? You don't. But they were beating on the house. If I could have found my gun that night and shot one of them, I'd be up on trial upstairs for murder.
And then do you feel safer now where you live?
No.
You don't? Pennsylvania, you don't feel safe?
Pammy, do I feel safe?
What's the matter there?
Think about somebody pounding on your door.
No, no, I said Pennsylvania. You said you moved.
Yes.
You don't feel safer in your new home?
No. I don't have a home. I exist. All I wanted was my belongings. The Sheriff's Department told me that if I went back, I was going to be arrested for trespassing. The zoning guy in Green Township told me, if you go back, you're going to be arrested for trespassing. I couldn't get none of my late husband's things. None of it. And the thing is, I don't know who this man was because he refused to identify himself. Now, process servers in the state of Ohio do not have to identify themselves. They do not have to be registered. They don't have to have background checks. You could get Joe Schmo, a rapist, off the corner and say, here, can you go show these papers to this person? There's no law covering it. But we're going to change that. And it's going to go through the Sheriff's Department, where process servers are going to have to register. They're going to have a background check. And they are going to be held accountable. I will never forget this man's face, never. But the thing is, nobody. Nobody helped my family. Not the police, not you, not the prosecutor. Alan from the Prosecutor's Office said, too bad. Do you have an eviction notice? No. I asked for an eviction notice. I didn't get one. What I got was this paperwork and five days to get out. And this was the type of person, Anthony, that I grew up with on the south side of Youngstown. You know the people I'm talking about. Be scared of them. You don't cross them. So now, my children and my grandchildren, who all work and nobody's on welfare, are now spread across three counties and two states. I was going to be totally out in debt by April. April, I was going to be, you can't say that, but... And here I am, $5,000 in debt again because I had to scrape up money for security deposits and make sure that they were all safe. But you didn't want to hear me last week because I was in distress because of not sleeping. The garbage man slammed the garbage can up against the side of the house, and I hit the floor. My son said to me, and you know my son, Danny. Danny said, Mom, you've got to get some help. You're not sleeping.
Lynn, I'm sorry to have to cut you off.
No, that's fine because I'm going to go to a news conference.
That we say up here will not make you feel any better.
No, it won't. You need to change your attitude.
Apologize for what you went through. All I could say to you.
Oh, no, we're going to change it because the thing is, I'm going to news conference next.
Okay.
Ready to go, Pammy?
Thank you.
Well, I hope you change.
Anybody else? Public comments? Gina?
Well, I'm here. So I did want to let the commissioners know that we have issued our 2023 annual report, which outlines all of the work that we did last year. It, you know, we started this, we started the annual reporting about three years ago. And, you know, it's a way for us to kind of report to the public on the cases that we handle in any given year and also, you know, just the work that we've been doing. So if there's questions regarding our dockets, there's questions regarding the outcomes of our criminal cases, you know, we have information about those in that report. So I just wanted to let you know. It's available on our website. It's available on our social media. And we have hard copies available as well. If anyone is interested or wants to hear more about what we've done last year, let us know. We'll be happy to provide information on it.
Could you bring a few of these down to our office?
I will.
And we'll put them on the counter?
Yes, I will.
And then maybe would be good if when we have our township meeting, our trustees would have a copy so they know,
Yes.
like who, basically, this page is very important.
Yes. And I do want to speak briefly, I feel compelled to speak a little, just very briefly on the comment that was made by the prior resident. I'm not sure, it's very sad that she had to go through that. But I did look at the docket in her case. There was no eviction that was filed. And what had been served on her was a notice for her to allow the Health Department to enter upon the property to repair a septic system. That's what the order was. It was not an eviction. It was an order for septic repair. She may have been confused. I'm not sure. I don't know what transpired in her home that day. But it certainly wasn't regarding an official proceeding or whatnot. There was no eviction. And it was just to repair a septic system.
Thank you.
That makes sense. Because the Board of Health is doing a lot of that around the county.
Yeah, I mean, you're required landlords, and the landlord is the property owner. And there was, there was some illegal proceeding. The docket does note that she did go down to, I believe, Sebring Court, County Court, and she inquired about it. And they noted on the docket that she had been there. And they were perplexed about the allegations of the eviction because it was not anything that had occurred. And so I'm not quite sure the circumstances surrounding that. You know, my heart goes out to anyone who has to undergo a seemingly traumatic event. But it certainly wasn't at the hands of any official entity or proceeding, so.
Thank you. And I mean, and that's why, and I know some people may get a little angry, but it's best we let her talk.
No, she's entitled, yes.
She is very upset. So I gave her a little bit of extra time just for she could vent. Because honestly, I don't know what happened.
I did look into it because, you know, if, you know, we have a special victims unit. And if there's allegations of misconduct that's going on in our county, you know, we want to be on top of it. And we did look into it. And I do have a staff member looking into it a little closer. But it was not an eviction. It was not, the order was not to have her removed from the home in any way. It was only to gain access to the property for septic repair.
Failed septic system, which the landlord has to do because it's not, it's not kept.
So that's, I was wondering what, what happened to her. But that's, it makes sense because I know other people that have had, had the Health Department go there. They were homeowners.
And I don't know what transpired within the home, you know, but, but the recourse is to file a complaint with the police. And that's kind of the procedure there, so. I hope she gets the help she needs and the press conference is fruitful for her.
Beautiful. Okay, anyone else? Public comments? Is Maggie on Zoom with us? Maggie McGee?
She just stepped out for a minute. You want to, you want to talk to her?
Sure.
Okay, hold on.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Maggie, good morning.
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 I understand this is the 30th anniversary of recognizing 911, emergency services. Is that true?
Yes, it is.
Would you like to offer some comments since basically I think you've invented this for us? So while you, to please tell us what's going on.
Well, I appreciate the recognition. I think a lot of it has to do with, we have dispatchers that literally have been with me from day one. And for them, this is not a job. It is a calling for them. They care so much about and are very passionate, as I am, about public safety and doing what we can, the best for Mahoney County. I will commend the Commissioners. You are, it is your system. And you have never blocked anything for progress with 911, as crazy as it might be projected sometimes. So we, I do, we just appreciate that. It's been 30 years, and I'm 39. So, you know, I've been here since I've been a baby.
I like that, Maggie. Well, I actually was, I was here. Not in this position, but I was here remembering that. And I know who was, Rick Billick was a big, a big champion of this 911 back in the day. I mean, he never was a Commissioner, but he was our friend. And he was a big, big component at that time, when it started.
Yes, he was. And, and, you know, we really, Mahoney County should be very, very proud of their system. I mean, we, we have multiple sites. We work as one. It's such a mutual type of aid situation. We have the same equipment and everything everywhere. But it is, I think, the caring that everybody puts into it, including the Commissioners, to make it the best it could be. We are actually noted by the state as one of the top systems in the state of Ohio. So that's really something to be very proud of, and, and so am I.
Maggie, anything on any upcoming projects you'd like to tell us about?
Um, once again, we are moving forward. We're going into the next generation of 911. That's very exciting. That's photos, that's videos, that's texting to 911, which we're in the process of working on now. So it's, it's a pretty exciting project. It'll be a faster service. It will map to the spot where somebody has called. So I appreciate the Commissioners' approval and letting us move forward on that project.
Thank you very much. And we also have in attendance Robin Lees. And Robin, would you care to offer some words for her?
I would just say that the 911 system, particularly in Mahoney County, operates very efficiently. I've had exposure to other counties and their systems and other jurisdictions. And this, this almost runs seamlessly here. The other thing is, I come from an era when to call the police or the fire department, and I was a police officer at the time, was seven digits.
Yep.
And 911 changed that dramatically. And I, I at first was a little skeptical, thinking that this is just going to cause our call volume and the, again, the calls to 911 would again be a problem. But it's been managed very well. And that didn't seem to be the case. And that's, like I said, it operates very well. And Maggie's done a great job over the years of kind of guiding things along.
Very good. Thank you. Carol?
No, I mean, I remember, I shouldn't say that because I date myself.
I'm not saying that.
He's not saying anything. But I do remember when the city started the room. You were part of that as well.
I was, well, I was a bean cock back then.
Yes, you were. And what was the, what was the captain's name that was in that room? He's in Florida and I actually retired.
Um, Fergus.
Yes, Captain Fergus.
He was a big part of getting that to work.
Oh, my God, he was. And when I came here, I mean, I worked with him there as a councilwoman. And then when I came here and, and we were going to move on it, Maggie remembers this. I worked with him. I mean, he was on this 100%. And what's going on in Mahoney County right now would have been done sooner. There were some hiccups on the way. But I think it's, it's a great thing. I mean, I remember when you had to ring, and you had to ring your ambulance differently. Of course, the city had an ambulance at the time.
Yeah, well, you had, I think, by your phone with like four emergency numbers.
Yeah.
Hope you did.
Back in the day.
I remember that.
Yeah, isn't it, it's strange that kids today, the millennials, the younger kids, don't ever remember a day when there wasn't 911. You know, it was always a part of their life. And even little five-year-olds that dial it, you know, and emergencies. You see, you always see a story on, on the news that some three-year-old saved their family's life, you know, dialing 911.
Isn't that amazing?
Yeah, it is.
That is really...
And I've probably told the story a dozen times, I'm sure, to most of you is that in 91, when I walked into my parents' house, you know, I didn't live there. And my father wasn't breathing. I started giving him CPR. And I tried to call an ambulance. And we didn't have little numbers by the phone. And, you know, there was no 911. And the first thing I thought to do was call the operator. They could, you know, connect me. You know, so you just dial zero and you got the operator. And I said, can you connect me on an ambulance within Youngstown area? And, no, we can't. You know, we don't have access to this or that. And, and they gave me this. And I'm giving my father CPR. And I had to get a phone book and look up laying ambulance. You know, and, and back then, it really, you know, resonates with you when, you know, it seems like 10 minutes went by, you know, and probably was like two minutes. But, you know, when you have to stop, you know, and especially being with your family, you know, it was, it was difficult. And then the nice thing was is in, in January of 94, I took office as a trustee in Austintown. And we were implementing 911 in 1994. And I remember when we would have to go out and go to a neighbor's house and have them dial it to see if we made connection. And we were out like on County Line Road where YDC was at the time because you have a separation on County Line Road between Trumbull County and Mahoney County. And so we would go to our side of County Line Road, go to a neighbor and, and ask them to dial. We would see if it went to Mahoney or Trumbull. You know, we were trying to make sure that we had everything right and zeroed in. And I remember, you know, going through, you know, the tasks to make sure that happened. The Police Department, you know, and our dispatch did a phenomenal job, you know, making sure that that was all part of it. And Maggie, I'm sure you remember stories like that back when it was implemented, that, you know, it was, it was a huge undertaking. And there was a lot of crossovers, areas, you know, that technology didn't identify and sort out like it is today because obviously it was 30 years ago, so.
Yeah. I mean, from the very beginning, just starting the project, because I've been here 32, so we had to obviously build the system. But, you know, even at the, the locations where we have the, the equipment, you know, change is hard for anybody. And, you know, you're putting in a computer in front of somebody that's used to picking up a phone. And there was a lot of opposition. They wanted just a phone that was red, that would ring. So the Commissioners' support through the years has really been very helpful in us trying to keep up with the technology and the changes and everything that goes on and driving all the streets to make sure you're right that, that when you dialed 911, it came to Mahoney County.
You're for granted now.
Yeah, I'll just real quick tell you how efficient I, I think 911 is. I was on the telephone, this was a few years ago, and I bought a big, one of those larger phones with the police buttons, those big squares. Well, I was on the phone, and it slipped out of my hand when I was done with the call. And it hit right on the 911. It wasn't five minutes later at my door. I'm like, you know, who's, who's over at the house? I look out in the driveway, it's a Poland cop. What happened? So I said, oh, the phone. So I opened the door and said, Mr. Rafcany, is everything okay here? You know, we got a 911 call. I said, I didn't call it. I said, when I dropped the receiver, it must have hit that button. And he says, yeah. He said, it, it came from your house. So, you know, I had to let him in, and he walked through the house. So it's, it's pretty efficient.
Yeah.
At least in Poland over there, but anyways. Robin, we had some questions for you. If you maybe give us an update on this eclipse issue.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's not, as I talked to you during the staff meeting, the eclipse is only going to have a minor effect over Mahoney County, other than the northwest corner of Milton Township, which is in that area as the eclipse passes. We've been in conversation with the ODOT, the Highway Patrol, again, about traffic issues and that. And again, they're expecting a slight uptick in traffic around 76 and 80 interchange. Some of our hotels may see, again, a little bit more in, in their usage for people who are going to travel north and west to get into the more prime areas for the eclipse. But for Mahoney County, it's going to be very, very minor. And again, during these sessions and these meetings, National Weather Service has even suggested there's about a 50/50 chance you're going to have rain or cloudiness anyway. I want to say last week or early this week, I sent a flyer that came from the Ohio Department of Health with guidelines about the eclipse and taking certain safety precautions. And that, I think, was distributed to all the county departments. So that's where we're at right now with the eclipse. We're not expecting, again, anything really adverse. We are going to do what's referred to as a partial opening of our Emergency Operations Center and stay in contact with the state through the day. But again, we're not expecting any issues.
I thought you weren't able to see it anywhere around here. You had to go to Cleveland to...
We are not going to be in, in the, in the primary area. We are in the far shaded, the lightest shaded area as far as having any, any impact at all. So like I said, every, everybody else we've talked to and in these, these meetings, they've actually pared back the original estimates for the increase in traffic and population. The first estimates came out, they pared it back almost 50%. So I think everybody's starting to get a, a better feel for it as it draws closer. But again, Mahoney County, we're going to have, again, very minor effects. And in conversations even with the schools, some of them are going to close or close early. And a lot of that has to actually do with students showing up for school as their parents are taking them in areas to view the eclipse. So these are all considerations that, and again, we're not really expecting any, any impacts. We'll be, we'll be there in case there is something that comes up. But again, we don't anticipate any issues.
Good. Got it. I2K.
Yeah, all over again.
I2K.
It's kind of bordering on some of that. So, you know, it's just, everybody kind of take a deep breath and...
I was at Thomas Steel. We all had to come to work at 11 o'clock to make sure that at midnight, the place didn't, you know, suddenly self-destruct, you know?
Oh, my God, that's...
I still have my time clock. It went off and started flashing.
It's very scary. It's like...
It leaves nothing.
I mean, it's scary. When you think about what's happening, it's not a scary event, it's something...
And Anthony, Anthony was, Anthony was out with his buddies playing. Tonight, we're going to party like it's 1999.
Never thought that year would come. Now look how old it is.
Yeah.
Jeez, oh man. We listened to that in high school in 1985 and it's like, oh God, I'll be dead in 1999. Now look. You know, Robin, I got people calling saying, you know, what are you going to do about traffic control? People are going to be looking up in the sky and there's going to be all these wrecks on 224. Is there gonna, I mean, I'm being dead serious. Have you heard that?
Um, hopefully they're not looking up into the sky without some kind of protective, uh, lens. But, uh, no, we haven't, we haven't heard anything quite like that. Uh, but again, we're not anticipating any adverse, uh, issues like that. Again, we are on the fringe of the fringe.
Can't even see it.
And, and how long is this supposed to last?
Just, it's, it's about four minutes if you're in one of the areas where you're going to experience the actual total eclipse. So, um, like I said, through the course of the day, and, and again, the National Weather Service says, you know, speaking of April, April showers and all that stuff. So y- your chances of viewing it i- are, is going to be iffy to begin with.
Why don't you get close and take a video for us and watch it later?
Well, I, I.
Somebody will.
I turn on any TV that day and see it.
I'm sure they'll have the case, you can.
Oh, God. We won't even get into the conspiracy theories that's happening before then after. That's a whole nother meeting.
No, the, the only thing, you know, I would stress, just common sense, you know? I, I mean, that's what should prevail here, so.
Thanks, Robin.
Thank you, Robin. Okay, anyone else? No? All right then. Um, Carol, motion to approve the minutes and bills for payment?
Motion to approve the previous minutes, board meeting number 12, Thursday, March 21st, 2024, and approval of bills for payment.
Second, roll call? Yes.
Commissioner Remedy Agadi?
Yes.
Yes, advertisement for bids, one and two, sanitary, Pat Genetti.
Morning, everybody. Uh, item number one is the Roselon Pump Station Replacement, which is improvement number 532. This is replacing an older pump station, uh, in the Northwest Lake Milton area. Uh, item number two is Lake Milton Waterline Replacement Project, improvement number 533, also replacing, uh, some water lines that are reaching their useful life.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Is that 513 or 533?
513.
Okay. Motion to approve advertisement for bids, one and two.
Second, roll call?
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy Agadi?
Yes.
Commissioner Choppikanty?
Yes, legal notice, number one, sanitary, Pat.
Commissioners, number one's a request, uh, for statement of qualifications for professional maintenance services. Uh, this is related to the instrumentation systems, uh, at the Mahoning County Sanitary Engineering Department, wastewater treatment plants, pump stations, water facilities and other related equipment. Um, and this is a re-advertising due to an error that occurred.
Alrighty, thank you very much.
Motion to approve legal notices, number one.
Second, roll call?
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy Agadi?
Yes.
Commissioner Choppikanty?
Yes, journal entry, number one.
Motion to approve journal entry, number one.
Second, roll call?
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy Agadi?
Yes.
Yes, moving on, agreements, letters A through I, and A and B is the auditor's office.
Good morning, everyone. Uh, letter A is the agreement with the auditor state to do our audit for fiscal year 2023. There's a slight increase of $1,025 from 2022. Uh, letter B is a MOU with soil and water. Um, they inspect our CAUV parcels in the county. Um, there is no change in the dollar per parcel.
Okay, thank you. Jobs and family, Audrey?
Good morning, commissioners, this is Tom Fillingan for Audrey. Um, letter C is our annual agreement with juvenile court to provide mandated 4D services such as establishing paternity and support orders. Uh, the amount is for $822,281.23, of, of which that amount, uh, $542,705.61 can be picked up by the feds, uh, federal government, and it's non-general fund.
Thank you, sir. And lead, Bill?
Good morning, commissioners. Uh, letter D is an agreement with American Pinnacle Construction for Lead Hazard Control and Healthy Homes Work, 1708 Manhattan, the amount of $52,430. Uh, letter E is an agreement with American Pinnacle Construction for chip home repair work at 1310 Mahoning, uh, in the amount of $9,625. Uh, both of those are non-general.
Okay, thank you. FG and H, recycling?
Good morning, Commissioner, how are you? Um, items FG and H are all three lease agreements with these three respective, uh, communities. Uh, these are the first three of many, uh, coming into pipeline.
Okay. And letter I, sanitary, Pat?
Commissioners, letter I is an agreement with Good Life Control Solutions. Uh, this is for maintenance services of the instrumentation systems at various locations on an as-needed basis in the estimated amount of $15,000, and these are non-general funds.
Thank you. Motion?
Motion to approve number two, agreements A through I.
Second, roll call?
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy Agadi?
Yes.
Commissioner Choppikanty?
Yes, change orders A through D, and A, B, and C is lead.
Uh, letter A is a change order with the Howland Company for Lead Hazard Control and Healthy Homes Work at 4319 Howard in the amount of $1,165.18. Uh, letter B is a change order with American Pinnacle Construction for Lead Hazard Control and Healthy Homes Work at 1019 Star, in the amount $275. And C, a change order with American Pinnacle for Lead Hazard Control and Healthy Homes Work at 2932 Idlewood in the amount of $1,375.
Okay, thank you. And O and B grants?
Good morning, commissioners. This is the change order number one with Cantfield Township. Um, they received a $30,000 grant from the commissioners to purchase a digital sign. It came in, um, unexpectedly lower, and they're requesting this change order to purchase a keyless entry system for the three buildings there on the, on their little campus in Cantfield Township, including the sheriff's office, the, um, road department, I think they have building there, and then, of course, the township hall.
Okay.
The balance from the sign purchase.
Motion to approve number three, change orders A through D.
Second, roll call?
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy Agadi?
Yes.
Commissioner Choppikanty?
Yes, resolutions?
Motion to approve resolutions, number one additions.
Second, roll call?
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy Agadi?
Yes.
Commissioner Choppikanty?
Yes, 2A, rec- uh, recycling, Lou?
Uh, commissioners, this is just a record of bid, uh, that we went out for our household hazardous waste collections. We are reviewing, uh, the bids now, and we will put forward the lowest and best of the commission very soon.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to approve number two, record of bids, A.
Second, roll call?
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy Agadi?
Yes.
Commissioner Choppikanty?
Yes. Resolution of awards, facilities, Alan.
Good morning. Is, uh, award the Mahoning County Courthouse chilled water system upgrades and alterations to MMI Marone Pinnacle Incorporated in the amount of $606,200, non-general and low.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to approve number two, number three, record of awards, A.
Second, roll call?
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy Agadi?
Yes.
Commissioner Choppikanty?
Yes, resolutions, A through L. I will read letter A and B. Resolution approving the road vacation of part of Oak Avenue in Boardman Township. Letter B, resolution approving the new creative position and appointment of Anna Marie Diasentas as Director of Grants Management, effective March 24th, 2024. And Anna, or Audrey, would you like to say something?
Commissioners, um, item B is, uh, a realignment of putting Anna where her position pretty much should lie as far as her responsibilities, things like that, uh, in giving her, there's a lot of reporting and things like that and meetings and committees and things that she sits on on behalf of the board, so it should be a closer position to the board.
Very good. Thank you. O and B?
Good morning, everyone. Um, this is a resolution to approve the budget for the, um, Austintown Boardman, Mahoning County Joint Communication District, basically the 911 dispatch code. Um, there's an additional amount of $134,571.
Thank you. Facilities, Alan?
Commissioners, D is a resolution approving the moral obligation payment of $748.13 to AIS Commercial Parts and Services for drain and heat, for drain heater service. Call that justice.
Okay, thank you, Alan. And letter E, grants management?
Commissioners, first, I'd like to thank you for your support and confidence in moving me to a director's position. And now moving to grants management instead of O and B, grants on the agenda will be my new name. Um, so I appreciate all the support. Um, letter E is a resolution approving the first addendum and expenditures with the following agency funded by the American Rescue Plan Act with Coatesville Township in the amount of $86,608. Item F is a resolution authorizing the contribution of $236,000 from the general fund and $90,000 from sanitary to support OSU extension. Item G is a resolution authorizing the contribution of $300,000 from the general fund to support soil and water. Item H is a resolution adopting the citizen participation plan. This is part of the Ohio Department of Development requirements for chip and CBDG programs in Mahoning County. Item I is a resolution approving the following appointments to serve as dents of needs under Ohio Children's Trust Fund Convention Council for two years. Now be Melissa Layton from Developmental Disabilities and Richard Chavarre from Children's Services Board. And item J is a resolution to transfer $65,255 from the emergency siren repair project to the bed road building improvements project within the Board of Mahoning County Commissioners Capital Improvement Fund, and that is, um, American Rescue Plan revenue replacement dollars. And that's, that's all.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
Can I add anything?
No, thank you.
Always does a great job. Okay, recycling, Lou?
Commissioners, uh, this is a, uh, request, uh, to, uh, pay a moral obligation. Uh, we have a date issue on the acquisition of, uh, educational supplies versus when the purchase order was created.
Okay, thank you. Sanitary, Pat Genetti?
Commissioners, letter L is a resolution approving a partial release of an easement, uh, in Austintown Township on the property owned by the Myers Stores Limited Partnership.
Hey. Thank. They're building it now.
Are they?
Yeah.
Number four resolutions, uh, motion to approve number four resolutions, A through I.
Second, roll call?
D, L. Oh, L, I'm sorry. Thanks, names.
Second.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy Agadi?
Yes.
Commissioner Choppikanty?
Yes. And to go to the order, any elected officials or department heads like to comment? No? Well, with that being said, we have an award to give today to a very special person, a very special lady, uh, who was recently recognized, uh, by OWAL for her community service, uh, to this community, her family commitment and all that she has done as our county commissioner.
I'm thinking, my God, they didn't tell me.
We had to surprise it, surprise her so she wouldn't sabotage it.
That's too funny.
Oh, my God.
Carol, we, we want to present this to you, and, um, she had a, she had a very beautiful ceremony at OWAL. We were all there, and, um, Carol, Carol knows everybody. And, uh, it was really nice to see her being recognized for all that she has done, uh, in her life, in this community, and as county commissioner. And, you know, Dave and I are very proud to work with you and be with you although times they get contentions with Dave teasing you a lot, but that's okay.
Leave yourself out of that.
Well, right. Right. But we're very proud of what you've done, and we'd like to present this to you. Dave, would you like to say some words?
Yeah, we, um, we were trying to figure out, uh, something that was apropos, and, uh, as always, turns out to the ladies in the office figured it out to, uh, to do something that, that kind of really exemplifies your approach, your attitude and, and the way you present, uh, your service to the county, the community, um, that it's a team, and we're all part of the team. And together as a team, we make, uh, we make things happen. You know, whether it's electeds, whether it's all of our staff, it's all of the county, it's all of the residents, you know, together we make it happen. And so we got you a piece of the puzzle, and this is, this is your piece of the puzzle. And it just says on it, it says on it, forget you are the piece. Never forget you are the piece that made the difference. And it has your name, and it has from Anthony and Dave and the staff, uh, on it. And so there's your piece of the puzzle, and, uh, and, uh, we just wanted to make sure that we didn't let it go by without acknowledging.
Oh, my God, did everyone see that? I mean, that is absolutely.
Oh, well, you had that made, yes.
Thank you. I'm like, my God, they didn't show me.
She didn't know, she didn't. She was about ready to lay into us.
I actually was.
Yeah.
Because they know me. But, um, I thank you for this. I mean, it's, it's hard to, um, I'm not one to talk about myself. I don't, that's not who I am. Who I am is let's get it done, we got it done, I don't care how we do it, and it's over. So we start a new project. But none of that could be ever done if the team's not in place. And this team, Nancy, Dave, Anthony, myself, Audrey, Holly, um, Megan and Jenna. Jenny, Jenna, Holly, Jenna. But anyway, and all the team that's on the, uh, screen can't do anything. Especially here, when they think you could do something by yourself, that is not true. And Robin, I call him all the time, still. And Alan.
Just dial 911.
Robin answers. He used to, many moons ago, but he was my 911 when I was a councilwoman. But, um, and I'll always say that. I said that when I was in city council, and Robin knows that, he knew me from then. We could talk a big line. When you're out, you could say, I'm going to do this and I'm going to do that. We're not going to do nothing until you come back and sit with the team and we agree to that. And then we start working on it, you know? Um, and I've done that. And I say, we have a great crew, we have a great team, let's work on the campus care, let's work on this, let's, let's move on this direction with OWAL. And, um, OWAL is special to my heart because I remember back, way back when Suzanne Barbodies was starting that, and I walked over to that, it used to be a five and 10, and I looked at a building that was nothing. And I looked up and I'm thinking, how are you going to fix this building? And honestly, within a year, she had that ready to roll. So anything they do, and, and now we'll all be a part of that, you know, because they saw that. I also, I often told her, I'm bringing the whole county over at different times, and as adults, we're going to come over and, and you're going to let us play with this equipment here, all this new technology. And she laughed, she's, no, I think it's a great idea to have your staff come over and see what it is. And honestly, I went over there a couple times just to visit, and I'm looking at you and think something. My, they have a media, a media room, you can go practice. They have a media room over there, and I, I mean, the kids go in and they, they sit at a desk and they, they do media presentation. I mean, unbelievable who's ever been there. So, and now I got to say one more thing. And now our campus care is full. We have just brought this building to campus secure with Joe Caruso and his agency. And I am so excited, that completes the campus secure. We are done. Every building is now occupied to help the most underserved individuals. And what was the grant that he got? What would you say?
Those zeros don't mean nothing, do they, Stacy? Those zeros after me.
So I'm so excited about that, as well as my two partners, we all work together on that. And, um, if anyone ever has the opportunity in the spring, please go there and look at all of the grounds. The apple trees, we needed a little more, I don't know, what, what's wrong with that soil?
We got to call Eric.
We got to call Eric, because the soil, I guess, over there is not too good. The apple trees are dying.
Oh, geez, too close to Trumbull County, that's why.
And that might be true. That might be true, but they, they have.
Soil's sweeter in Mahoning County.
They have just, you know, all kind of fresh vegetables there now. We have the greenhouse, which is productive there as well. And it's just, it's amazing, there's a big pavilion there. So if you wanted to bring a coffee and just go sit, I mean, it's really a nice area. Anyway, thank you, thank to my partners and our staff for this. Holly, thank you. I, I mean, I couldn't have thought of anything nicer to get. I appreciate that, kids.
Would anyone like to say anything on behalf of Carol, who's here?
I would.
Audrey?
You know, I remember when I first met Carol.
Yeah.
Before I decided to come to Mahoning County, Carol was the first commissioner that approached me about that and to be a part of the, you know, to come and interview. I was at a county and I was working and I was fine, it just happened to be a bad day there, and they caught, they caught me on the right time, and that's why I'm here, because I'm not a person who jumps from one job to another, you know? But it has been an honor to work with you. Um, I appreciate your dedication to our residents and your passion for those who cannot necessarily speak for themselves. And you, as a board, have all worked very hard to make sure that those voices are heard and you've provided and helped and supported so many services that actually reach to those individuals. And the passion comes out in each of you, and I appreciate that. And Carol, your love for just all those, for our seniors, for our DD population, for our children, for those that go through all of those issues, um, has been genuine.
Thank you.
It is not fake. And you have that genuine, and you portray it in our. It is not fake. And you have that genuinely and you portray it in our office and to us and to everyone that's around you. So I thank you for it.
Thank you so much for that. I thank everybody. I, I'm overwhelmed. I mean, I really am. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Carol. Thank you, Jim. All right, Nancy, our next meeting?
It'll be next Thursday at nine thirty.
Nine thirty?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Do I have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, roll call?
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy Agati?
Yes.
Commissioner Choppikanty?
Yes, thank you, everyone.